I would like to call this workshop meeting to order to end with complete note. President? This is the joint meeting of the City Council, the Economic Development Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss the development of proposals we received for the Maryland Park Lake District developer. I am excited that the public of the city received the wheeling station of many years of planning for responsible growth for our people. With that, I'll turn it over to the City Administrator, Jim Crish. No problem.
As the Mayor mentioned, my name is Jim Crish. Again, the City Administrator here in Maryland Heights. Mayor gave an introduction introducing who was here this evening. Won't repeat that. I just want to go over the format for tonight's meeting for anybody that may not be familiar with how workshops actually work. Here in Maryland Heights, it's long been our tradition and policy that when we have a work session, it is a work session. It is meant for staff to be able to communicate directly with our council members, with our Economic Development Commission, and our Planning and Zoning Commission, in this case regarding the proposals that we received for the Maryland Heights Lake District. As you all know then, because it is a work session, we are not going to have comments from either the audience or the developers. This will be questions and answers based between the commission members and council and staff. However, we have provided forms for anyone that does feel as though they would like to make a comment or get more information. We have put a form on the back table in the back of the room. Please feel free to grab that and leave it on the back table. We will grab that information and we will make sure that we respond appropriately to your question. Also, if you have questions that you feel that you want to ask or you want to make a comment, please go to the Maryland Park Lake District website, which is the mplakedistrict.com. That's a website that's available for all sorts of information with regards to this project. 24/7 that's available for you to be able to comment at your leisure. So, we want to make sure that we hear and get input from all interested parties, so please utilize those means as best that you can. Moving forward tonight, we're going to make it as simple and easy as possible. Wayne Aldroid, our Community Development Director, will give a brief overview of where we are and how we got here. And then we will turn it over to Mike Seeker, our City Planner, and Mike will go through the six different proposals. He's going to put them up on the screens above you so you'll be able to follow along with the plans and proposals that have been submitted. But that is the purpose of the meeting tonight and our format. Mike and the rest of staff will get the questions and comments that come forward from our various city committees and city council. And then, moving forward, we will gather more information, we will work with the developers, and we will come back again to the same committee, the same workshop format on August 9th. So, that's the format, that's how we'll follow things. One last thing, no decisions will be made at this workshop or at the other workshop. There'll be plenty of time throughout this entire process for people to be able to make their comments during public hearings, they'll be able to have more information come forward. But these meetings are not intended for decision-making purposes. It really again is a work session so that we can make sure that we're all on the right page and we're working forward to meet the goals and vision of the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wayne and let him make a overview of the project and where we are, and then we'll get on to Mike's introduction of the six different proposals. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Let me know if you can hear me. Mayor, Council, and Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to present this proposal to make Maryland Park Lake District process and proposal. Given the present presence of interested residents, I would use an approach used much by the press of who, what, where, when, why, and how. I think that approach will allow some of the people in the audience to have a fuller understanding of what the issues, intent, and purposes and the goals and objectives of the city will be. So, who? Well, the development of Maryland Park Lake District is, will be the result of a series of partnerships that follow a master development redevelopment plan that will be designed to implement the city's vision. The partners in this process, the city, this group that brought you here tonight, Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Council. The property owners, obviously, their representatives or the developers that they are associated with, the Howard Ben Levy District, and St. Louis County. So, this is an integrated effort, it is just not the city, but there are regional players involved with the property. Well, where? Maryland Park Lake District encompasses approximately 8,600 acres. That is approximately 13 and a half square miles of land, eastern Missouri, protected by a 500-year levee, north through Interstate 70, and south to Waterworks Road, and west to Creedport, Maryland Park, Creedport Memorial Park, which is 2,000 acres in itself. The Lake District includes Riverport Business Park, Hollywood Hotel Casino, the Hollywood Amphitheater, St. Louis, Missouri River Sewer Treatment Plant, the Missouri American Order Treatment Plant, and Creedport Airport. The designated redevelopment area is 1,800 acres. This does not include any county park lands, such as Creedport Memorial Park. All right, what? What are we trying to do? We're trying to develop approximately three square miles of privately-owned land that is well situated in the St. Louis region. This property is owned by motivated and willing sellers, and the properties can be assembled and create large-scale tracks that will help mixed-use development. More importantly, why? The city is seeking to enable economic growth that attracts new dollars into the St. Louis region and focusing on development themes of sports, recreation, entertainment, and hospitality. Economic growth that is based on creating a system of integrated open spaces, providing connectivity between and within mixed-use projects, which integrates stormwater conveyings and management systems, which are commonly referred to as green infrastructure, and that assistance will be designed to deal with internal flooding. How? We're going to implement the economic development vision that's generated by nearly two decades of comprehensive planning efforts. Those efforts over the last 20 years have had a series of amendments to the plan based on input from the marketplace, the residents of the city, and residents surrounding this The other thing we need to do is how we're going to do it? We've already started. We've constructed development infrastructure with the completion of Maryland Heights Express Light, now State Route 141, and the construction and approval of the 500-year levy. And the next step in that process would be to implement future stormwater conveying systems by the Howard Ben Levy District. We will use the comprehensive plan and their goals to address the expectations and development. I would ask you to carefully listen to these words, they're from a comprehensive plan, but they are driving part that I would ask you to consider when we're evaluating any plan in this district. We want to encourage a sustainable development pattern. We want to consider location and infrastructure opportunities. We want a plan for a mixture of uses and experience focused on hospitality and entertainment. Our goals are also to enhance, reinforce, and connect local and regional open space and create development patterns that result in sufficient connection and use stormwater management systems as a visual, environmental, and functional amenity. We want to provide opportunities to existing businesses to grow and expand, and we want to create a development pattern that efficiently and effectively utilizes the future transportation systems across the board, automobiles, freight transport, bikeways, and regional trails. So, okay, we want to do all this. Well, when can we do it? Well, this is my opinion, and not technically based on anybody giving me input from the development community or the elected or appointed officials. I believe that the timeframe that you're seeing there is the first year we're already into in terms of planning and development. We've looked at the schedule and we believe we'll take this into 2017 to get all the committing and record board approval in place. Year two would be, I assume, marketing from a development perspective and reviewing of construction plans to issue prints to construct. Years two to five, I see the infrastructure being built, internal flooding, flood controls and conveyances, roads, et cetera. And year three through 10, the projects I would expect, first would be a development catalyst of regional retail. Second phase would be create traction in the form of sports facilities and hospitality. A third phase would be to create destination of place and use of residential mixed-use. And lastly, of course, we accomplish all that would be the secondary infill uses that would create a sustainable development diversity. All right, what everybody wants to really hear. The city received six development proposals for the RFP for the redevelopment of Lake District. These responses included a mix of uses, a range of retail, industrial, business, hospitality, and associated venues. There was one proposal that addressed development in a larger, more comprehensive manner. The remainder of the proposals, as the City Planner will discuss with you, are isolated and not integrated, but they can be contributed to mixed-use development when connected by transportation elements, open space, cars, and reserves. The objective of the Council, together with the commissions, in my opinion, is to formulate a master redevelopment plan for the Lake District. And as you are looking at Mike's reviews of individual responses to the RFP, please keep in mind that the current challenge is to try to integrate these plans into a whole that makes up a master redevelopment plan, and that reflects the vision of the city and considers the marketplace as we set forth in the comprehensive plan vision. Secondly, staff believes that this workshop be a discussion of proposed land uses and how they relate to one another. Please focus on the big picture rather than the specifics of each project. With that kind of overview and input, Mike and I and our staff would believe can provide the technical assistance that will come forward at the next workshop where the proposed master redevelopment plan may be presented and reviewed.
For City Council members, Economic Development Commission and Planning Commission, we'll go through these proposals one at a time, and of course, feel free to stop us at any point in time and ask your questions. We'll pause at the end of each of those proposals to make sure that we ask any pertinent questions that you may have before we move on to the next proposal. With regards to the statements that Wayne had met, of course, this has been a long vision of the city. There's a lot of time and effort that's been going into these plans for decades. We are very careful in our deliberations and our due diligence to make sure that whatever is developed and proposed for these areas is in the best interest of the city of Maryland Heights and for the region. So, rest assured that everyone here has the best interest in mind when we move forward to make sure that we're doing the very best that we possibly can, and the most sensitive projects that can be proposed will be certainly reviewed and, again, will be provided to the public on our website, as well as you'll be able to hear more information as it moves through the process. So, with that, let's get on with the proposals. That's what everybody's here to see, and I'll let Mike step up and do notes.
Just like to go over, as Jim's indicated, a quick overview of each of the proposals so we can start the discussion. Staff will have to get some input from the Council and Commissions just in terms of some general first blush thoughts maybe, additional information you might be looking for from these developers, from these proposals, so that you can make a more well-informed decision. So, I'm obviously not going to provide you all the details for each project, but I'd like to just do a quick overview. Also, I should mention, a couple of weeks ago, these were posted on the city's website. They're also transmitted by email to folks that subscribe to the City Planner's Report. Back this meeting, I'll send them back to your inbox as you see, have them for quick reference. But we sent out not only a map of all of the different proposals, how they fit together, a quick synopsis on each, but also a link so you could go ahead and read the complete sumel for each of these proposals as well. So, here's the map, the overview, showing you the six proposals. One of the proposals, Hattrick Consultants, doesn't have a location, and I'll explain that a little more later. And the reason why this map is somewhat confusing is because Howard Ben Development, you see in the red crosshatch there, that encompasses some properties that we'll also submit for development proposals. So, that encompasses not only Howard Ben Development, but it goes over top of Altus Properties and Panatonia as well. So, we'll talk a little bit about that as we go. So, the first one I'd like to talk about is Altus Properties. It's a not-quite-32-acre site that's at the corner of Creedport Airport Road and Route And what's proposed, you can see there, the upper-left portion is for multifamily residential, so the development needs to be approximately 400 to 450 market-rate multifamily apartment units. And the red portion there that would be along 141 is proposed for supporting select service retail. And as far as the apartment complex goes, it would be 50 to 23-story apartment buildings with supporting clubhouse, pool, other outdoor amenities. Here's some photographs that they submitted showing comparable type projects. And as far as ownership goes, Cornerstone Land, which is a subsidiary of Altus, owns this property. So, this proposal is owned by Altus. They've also included a formal zoning application included with their proposals. They are ready to move forward in the zoning process to get this property rezoned and construct this development. From an economic development standpoint, as far as any kind of incentives, what they've indicated is, I'll read their proposal. The proposed development is contingent upon the Howard Ben Levy District's ability to design, finance, and construct the necessary pump stations, thus providing a holistic stormwater management system for the district. So, not relating to specific kinds of economic development incentives they propose, but they've been looking for Howard Ben to fully complete the pump systems for internal stormwater control. Any questions for anybody else next month? Maybe we'll discuss them all in detail at the end, but... So, Creedport Airport. Creedport Airport is approximately 300 acres. They're in the process of undergoing a major planning process, comprehensive planning process is mandated by the FAA. And as part of this process, they have identified a couple of things. They've identified some runway expansions, they've identified possibly paving, the grass runway facility that they have, and they've also identified some land-based developments, would be hangers or some sort of developing managed garden. Their application doesn't request any kind of economic development incentives, although they do indicate that there's a number of economic benefits provided by the airport. They estimate that approximately $2.6 million annually, and they provide 20 full-time jobs here in Maryland Heights. There was no formal zoning application to rezone this site requested in their application, but I think as they move forward in their master planning process, we'll see that, because some of the development that they show there, notably in pink there, is, while it's adjacent to the airport, it's outside what their current zoning grants them. So, as the airport expands, I think you'll see resounding applications to allow that expansion. Hattrick Consultants, so this is the one where no project location is given. The statement that they made was the event center could be placed virtually any location within the scope of the RFP so that there's accessible road access and near to additional commercial retail and/or hotel property. So, this is an event center. It's approximately 6,200 permanent seats and up to 8,000 seats for non-ice events. So, the primary focus, as you can see, is for ice hockey, but they've indicated it could be used for up to 125 events per year over and above just ice hockey. So, they submitted a number of renderings in a package, which if you get a chance, I'd encourage you to take a look at. And they also submitted some photographs from a similar facility. Next is Panatonia.
What kind of incentives were they asking for?
Oh, sorry about that. Let's see. So, it says, "The facility would cover its obligations through ticket sales, sponsorships, naming rights, suites, club seats, concessions, parking, merchandise, and fees, but funding mechanisms could also include state, county, or city incentives, such as bonds, taxes, and TIPS as examples." So, there was an ask there.
Is this the same company that wanted to develop something similar in Patton?
Yes.
Like a Hattrick plan? Because I remember something about a building that would look like the old arena.
Correct.
What happened with the demolition?
Not sure. I don't think it was discussed in their RFP. We can get that information from the developer by that. You guys familiar with that? All right, so Panatonia, it's approximately 134-acre site, 134 acres on both sides of Route 141, Sportport Road. The interesting thing about this proposal is this is, other than Riverport and Casino, this is the only site in Maryland Heights right now that is zoned for development, for large-scale development. In 2008, this property was zoned planned district manufacturing, and in 2009, a development plan was approved for approximately 1.2 million square feet of a combination of office, office flex, and distribution-type development. So, that zoning is in place. Site improvement plans have been approved. In fact, the site was even graded in 2009 prior to the economic downturn. So, with the way this site is zoned now, if someone could pull building permits and start work tomorrow, provided they meet the conditions of the ordinance. And the ordinance is very specific with regard to how much office campus is developed and with regard to how much office is within each office flex building. So, you can build a fairly large building for distribution purposes or warehousing, but a portion of that has to be office, that's 5%. That was one of the major hooks for that particular development ordinance that's ultimately ever come to fruition. So, what Panatonia is proposing, besides the proposal that they sent in as part of the RFP process, they're also requesting a zoning process, and that is to amend that existing zoning ordinance for their proposed development. And unlike the previously proposed or approved development, they're showing retail uses along both sides of Interco, Route 141, and then they're showing office flex and office distribution uses further, I guess that would be northwest toward the levee. So, again, this requires an amendment to that zoning because it's so specific with regard to the uses. No retail was formally proposed or considered as part of that request, and now we're looking at more of a retail, office flex land use pattern here. So, as far as their total building area, it's a little bit higher than what was originally approved. I said it was 1.3 million before, they're proposing about 1.3 million square feet. Panatonia is the owner's developer, so they do have control over the property as far as ownership. As far as their ask from an economic development standpoint, it says, "Developer hereby requests that ad valorem tax abatement be granted to the project via Chapter 353 of the revised statutes of Missouri." And also included in their packet was a rather in-depth economic analysis prepared by Development Strategies, St. Louis Economic Development Company. So, be sure to check that out. Questions on that one? Just a couple of renderings should show, that's what are included in the packet of the distribution facilities proposed in the farm. SLC SW Farms LLC is the property owner of approximately 62 acres at 141 and River Valley Drive. So, you can see they own pieces of property on both sides. Those are currently being marketed by colliers. What their proposal says is, "SLC SW is in the process of identifying a development partner for the project, is in discussions with several interested developers." So, what their vision of this would be would be service retail kinds of uses, including hotel, and just uses designed to complement the sports and entertaining uses that will appear on larger-scale property. Given the frontage and the depth of these lots, obviously, a large-scale development is probably out of the picture in this particular site. As far as the economic development incentives asked, what they say is, "SLC SW anticipates the project will require the assistance of redevelopment incentives due in part to the significant site infrastructure requirement." So, nothing specific that they throw out the possibility of needing something due to infrastructure costs. And there's their plan as far as creating those. And I saved this one for last because I think as Wayne indicated, it's more all-encompassing. So, this is Howard Ben Development LLC. It's about 1,900 acres. It encompasses both sides of 141, north of 364, and areas along the river. So, really two parts to this proposal. So, the part in yellow there, it's about, that area is about 570 acres. The proposal calls it the Little Lake Town Center, and what it says is, "This area could include regional retail, office campus, health and wellness, entertainment and amusement facilities, and residential development." So, that's the yellow portion there along 141. The pink portion is called up as the Conservation and Recreation Area, CONRE. It says, "The CONRE Conservation Recreation Area, which is about 1,400 acres, would be owned and managed by a new nonprofit entity, which is responsible for land management, conservation, and comprehensive youth sports program." And one more thing I've noted indicates, "The developer proposes a comprehensive lake plan that dramatically expands and integrates water features throughout the Lake District." So, this is the extent of the information they got from a planning standpoint, was this map here, and some of the verbiage that the applicant included. They also indicate no specific ownership. They say, "The developer has had limited contact with some, but not all, of the landowners to the proposed Lake District area." And it is anticipated that the development, the concept plan, will require both private and public funding. Sources of public funding could include the use of tax-incentive financing, the Transportation Development District, and Community Improvement District. So, I guess what's interesting to note about this one, because it encompasses some of the other projects that you've seen, I'm sure I don't laser pointer, but if you look at the pink area, it's just above the yellow one, the triangular-shaped one that's right along 364. That encompasses a portion of SLC SW's property. If you remember, SLC SW, which I talked about a second ago, showed their property for service retail, commercial kinds of uses. This project shows it for a conservation area. So, it's one way where the two projects are going different directions. This project also includes, in that yellow area, a portion of Panatonia's site as well. And so, the retail that Panatonia's showing is fairly consistent with this approach as is explained, but not necessarily industrial. The word industrial is never mentioned in the Howard Ben Development LLC proposal. So, of the proposals, that's the only, those are the only two places where they don't necessarily align. Any of the other things align pretty well with one another.
So, the green area is property currently, as they have identified as Creedport Lake Park. So, that's all county property today?
Correct. The green is shown, as shown just for reference, that's all counting on Creedport Lake Memorial Park.
So, the pink area, even the area on the top of this photo, which is beyond the levee up to the river's edge, is private property today?
Correct.
Mike, can you read the very first slide?
Yeah.
It shows the whole district with all the, everybody just... Thank you.
Mike, it would be my understanding that, and Wayne, that regardless of the development within this area, that they would work with the Howard Ben Levy District in reference to the conveyance of internal water? Would that be correct in saying?
Yes, sir.
They don't have a choice?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the areas that overlap with the Howard Ben Development and other developers, they overlap. Are those areas either one or the other, or is there a possibility of both developers working together on these overlapping areas?
I think there's always a possibility. I mean, the best-case scenario would be that the developers work together. What if not? What if not, it really falls to who has control over the property. And in this case, in both the yellow Altus and the blue Panatonia, those two developers have control over those two properties. Howard Bend Development is shown in red.
Is not one of the main objectives of this process to come up with a unified plan that would work and not be a hodgepodge where this year A builds something and next year B builds something, and then at the end you've got a hodgepodge of developments that...
That's right about the rest, sir. But by many. You have two processes. One has been basically completed. The planning commission has adopted a comprehensive plan which shows the future land use for the Maryland Park Lake District. A process that you are engaging for always integrating that is to get to what I described at least, a master redevelopment plan, which addresses your question. So the edges, the overlaps, get looked at in terms of a comprehensive plan, in terms of redevelopment plan, and then you start to synthesize that into a plan for the entire area so we can evaluate infrastructure requirements, incentive requests, that kind of thing. That's the outcome from my perspective, that this group goes through via guidance document and supplements the comprehensive plan as well as does the guidance to the developers in terms of what we would expect their future partnership. Now with that, as Mike mentioned, as always, the development industry has decided to complicate things, which you have full applications on two tracts of land, Panatonia and Altus, who are going directly to the zoning rezoning process. So this is like the air pattern over O'Hare Airport. There's going to be a lot of things flying around, trying the land, and certainly. That's why we want to try to get all these concepts integrated by guidance of development and meet the vision that the city and the commissions have set.
And if I can just add to what Wayne and Michael just said, the next step, one of the next steps in the process is for the city plan, in this case Mike Zeke and Wayne, of course, being involved in the series of pre-application meetings where we sit down with the developers and we discuss in more depth the details of their plan to try to get a better understanding of how they see all of this integrated together in an effort to try to move everybody in the same direction and be able to meet the vision of the city. Of course, we want to come back in this very short turnaround between this meeting and two weeks from now, we have a second workshop. But our goal would be to meet with all of those developers between now and then, be able to come back with some further details, maybe some site plan drawings that we can come back and show the council and the commissions to see, you know, how this is progressing and moving forward. Input from council and the commissions, of course, would be a great help to us to make sure that we are asking the right questions, making sure that we're meeting the vision of the city, and of course, we want to make sure that we're doing what is appropriate for the area in terms of development.
How much of this land is in a floodway?
And you may not have come into the meeting at the very beginning, but we did say in the very beginning that this is meant to be a workshop and a work session for city council and our commissions. The audience and the developers will have ample time to be able to submit their public comments and make comments. We do have a page, although set back on this table. Please feel free to fill that out with your comments and questions. We will make sure that we give the information back to you. Also, for anybody that may have walked in late, the Maryland Park Lake District has their own website. It's mplakedistrict.com. 24/7 you can get onto that site. You can ask your questions, make your comments. We monitor and review that every day. So any questions, comments that you have, such as that, we're more than happy to get that information to you. And back to the comments. And one thing of importance that I think Mike and Wayne both addressed, two of the projects, I believe, came through with full zoning applications already attached to their RFP, which means, as Mike stated, those can move through the process right away. The goal of the city right now, I believe, and for staff anyways, is to work with those developers through the process to make sure that we try to integrate all of those plans into one cohesive plan that isn't, as Mayor mentioned, isn't a hodgepodge of development. It is something that addresses the entire region in a very comprehensive and responsible way.
Just have a question. On our redevelopment area, wasn't the area north of the MSD plant and south of the Casino those fields included in that redevelopment area?
Yes.
And we, but we haven't received anybody quoting right.
Right. Those were the tracts that Noah and none of the RFPs addressed.
Councilman, owners of those tracts have met with us and made any advice in terms of what the process is.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting that out of all the lines that were drawn, those, that area wasn't included. So just curious.
And I think another thing of note in this particular area, two projects that were not mentioned are shown on the map. Of course, St. Louis County, a number of months ago, they announced plans for a major recreation facility, site facility for that area. And then just recently, the county along with St. Louis Blues also mentioned the possibility of a facility that would also be located within St. Louis County-owned property. So obviously, there's a lot of interest outside of what the city is proposing and reviewing. So there are other recreational and sports-type facilities that are being proposed. And those are also entities that we will, besides working with the developers that have made their proposals, we are also working with the county to understand what their plans are and how they plan to move forward. But that also will be a very integral part into what happens within the districts. We want to make sure that it's very much a part of the process as well.
I guess a question, as you sit down with the Howard Bend Development piece that's outside of the levee, you know, an interesting question would be if they would be planning on working with the core of the Conservation Department to develop river access? Is that what their intent is for that piece or purely to set aside? So that might be a fun question. I mean, that would be an interesting component if we're after hospitality and entertainment and recreation. But you know, we don't have river access at all anywhere in the city. And it borders a lot of the city.
Sometimes it's difficult to look at these plans and then formulate your questions. And you may think of something later this evening, or tomorrow, or anytime over the next few days. Please feel free to forward those comments and questions back to either Michael, Wayne, or myself so that we can make sure that we, as we meet with developers, we can ask those questions and be able to gather more information. Again, the next meeting scheduled, we have no other further questions for tonight, would be August 9th. That would be same time, same place, 5:30. The Tuesday two weeks from now will be our next work session. After that, I would encourage everybody to look at the MP Lake District website to make sure that you follow along with the information. As we get that, we will be posting it on that website. You'll be able to follow along if the information is received. And you'll also be, most important, be able to pay attention to the schedule that will be laid out as the process moves forward. We're anticipating that August, pardon me, October 11th would be a planning commission meeting, and that would be where there would be the opportunity for a public hearing and for detailed plans to be submitted before that commission. So I don't want to promise that that's going to be the date. It may be delayed for any particular reasons, but again, look at the website and be able to get further information.
What I'd like the council and the commissions to understand is, we put that schedule together just like I went through the phasing, our best knowledge of the process. That is going to be fluid depending on the questions and applications, the questions to ask the application by. One of the reasons that we set up the website is so that there's always current full information available. But those dates are going to change in terms of process, especially since we have zoning processes that have certain timeframes in that. So the schedule is a guide at this point that you have. It will be refined at every step as each domino falls into the speed.
And once again, I don't want to, you know, keep reiterating the same thing over and over again, but at the same time, this meeting was really meant to be an introductory meeting, which is what the purpose was, is to provide the information at long time to all the authorities that are here within the city that will be hearing the projects as they come forward. Of course, let the public know what's been proposed. We're not looking to move this quickly. We are interested in moving this forward, and we are interested in making sure that it runs through the process in the timely fashion. But at the same time, we'll be doing our due diligence and making sure that we provide the information as we get to council. We'll hear it again on August 9th. And I'll say it one last time, besides the mplakedistrict.com, there are forums that are on the back table in the back. If you have any comments or questions that are specific in nature, please give us that information. We will ask for you to provide your name and address and contact information so we can get in touch with you. But we are very interested in knowing what your comments and questions would be, and we'll make sure that we answer those in the most appropriate fashion possible. Before we, before I ask the mayor to adjourn the meeting, is there any last minute questions from either the commissions, the committee, or the council?
The idea of St. Louis County and the Blues have, where is that St. Louis County-owned land on the...
Yeah, they haven't given an exact location, but they own several pieces of ground that can be utilized and that's...
Everything in the greens on Levy County.
Right.
Okay. So it may not be all... They have a couple of choices. Like, how many acres?
Two thousand.
Just 2,000 acres.
It will be on, it will be on St. Louis County ground. That's where they're supposed to build it.
And again, we'll work with the county officials to make sure that we, as they do their process, they provide us their information as well.
I just have one observation. On the website, we have two maps. One of them is the FEMA map, and there's a code in the upper-left-hand corner on the website that matches the colors on the map. And there's no explanation of the code. And drive back through that through the FEMA website, you know, takes a college degree and a night at the Holiday Inn. So it might be helpful, we could add that to the Lake District website.
Yeah. I've seen a discussion we get that puts it in the management section. I think it's really all about that.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of space, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Further comments? Further comments or questions? Move to adjourn? Move.